Good evening, all. I'm calling this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven. Once again we assemble ourselves in these chambers to do the business of the city. Once again we ask for your guidance and your presence to be in this meeting. To help us do the right thing for the best of all of the citizens of Cartersville, Georgia. With your guidance and your grace, we will be so grateful. Whereas these blessings are in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Please do it for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie Lott, Word 1. Chase Stubb, Word 2.
He's asked.
Carrie Brock, Rock, Word 3.
Here.
Colin Tulli, Word 4.
Here.
Eric Fox, Word 5.
Here.
Taffin, Word 6.
President.
The first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes for March 21st. Mr. Lovell has made me aware of one edit that needs to be made. I'll let you note that this time, please.
As y'all may all recall, y'all approved the budget amendments by emergency ordinance at the last meeting. Those actual physical ordinances are not in these minutes. They'll be presented to you at the next meeting, once all the numbers that have in there have been confirmed. But I don't trust it when I have to put in the numbers. So you'll be approving the minutes as is with that, with notation of that change.
Please note, we don't trust it when you do that either.
I don't blame you. I wouldn't either.
Other than that, are there any edits or changes to the minutes? And if there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Minutes are approved unanimously. Ms. Brock, you've got the first item, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is a date request change from the Thursday, July 4th meeting to be moved to Tuesday, July 2nd, to recognize the July 4th holiday. And your approval of this change is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, next item, please.
Yes, Mayor. This is a resolution to be sent to the Department of Community Affairs, which basically states the way in compliance with our state guidelines, so that the grant writing agencies can apply for grants.
Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion's approved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, next item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. You all received in your packet the, a copy of the goals that were set at the city visioning session back in January. And I will just hit the highlights of those and ask for any discussion and your approval at the end. The first one included, included the mandating funded of the pension, excuse me, the mandated funding of the pension fund, which you all approved to expedite that at the last meeting in March. We're working towards making those contributions in our budget that you all will be looking at in the coming months as well. So we've already started work on that one. Second is fiber to the JDA park in Cast White Road area. Next one is the increase, the rotation of resurfacing plan for paving of our roads. Pilot program for beautification in Wards 1, 4, 5, and 6. Continuing, continuation of the AMI project for the city and the utilities. A development regulation summit of open dialogue with our, includes you all in planning and development and some of our stakeholders. Also, the discussion of lowering the food and percentages in the restaurants that serve alcohol. This would include a joint meeting with Alcohol Control Board. The next item includes that as well, and it's to look at sales percentages for businesses which, which, which wish to serve as a non-restaurant. And this would include a joint meeting with Alcohol Control Board as well. Some additional items are to attract or train and improve employee benefits. Website design and refresh, which is currently in the process as well. Upgrading of the traffic signals. We have 10 total to replace that the city is responsible for. And we're looking at three a year, and also potentially adding a code enforcement officer next budget year in Wards 1, 4, and 5, with a kind of a concentration on those areas. Any discussion or changes you wish to make? If not, or after that, I will ask for your approval of these goals.
Anything to add? Any discussion?
How soon are we going to get going on that meeting, where planning and development?
For the development regulations, once it's approved, I will get with Randy and we will get that working. We looked at a nine to 12 month range from start to finish, but we can start the planning process before then.
Obviously, we had one meeting with the Alcohol Control Board. I guess that was prior to visioning, wasn't it? And we've got another one that's actually tried to get organized, once we can get everybody on the same, buddy's calendars matched up. So that'll happen sooner rather than later as well, kind of hammer out some of those issues. Is there anything else to add, or any other comments or discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to approve these goals? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have some ordinances, second readings tonight. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with those, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first one is an amendment to the historic preservation ordinance. This came about from a review from the State Historic Preservation Office. It's basically housekeeping. It's how we actually appoint our board members. There has been a change to how the state does it, and we are actually more restrictive. And this will clear up that issue. And with that, it was run by the Historic Preservation Commission. They did recommend approval of this ordinance. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
All right. Any discussion for this item, or any questions for Randy? And if there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Randy.
Thank you again. This is a proposed amendment to the alcohol ordinance as it relates to cigar shop. A new definition for retail cigar shop has been added. And a change in the percentage of alcohol versus non-alcohol sales has been amended. This came about from the one cigar shop or cigar bar in the city. You know, there were some issues with the sales on the third quarter report. The owner came before the Alcohol Control Board with the proposed amendment. Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval of the proposed changes. And with that, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you.
The owner of that one cigar bar in the city that started the process with this is, is here. If you had any questions about the particular business model.
I think we do. I appreciate your being here tonight. I think there was some need for clarification during our work session. So your presence here is kind of helpful. If you don't mind, if you'd step forward and your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Absolutely. Good evening. I'm Stephen McDowell, Old Havana Cigar Bar, 20 West Main Street, Cartersville, Georgia. My residence is 901 Terrace Drive, Rome, Georgia. Thank you for having me here. I'm welcome to enlighten you in any way I can.
All right. I don't know what question to ask.
Sure. So just kind of, I guess, kind of walk me through the reasoning why you are looking at this. Would like to have this increase in, the increase in sales of alcohol versus the tobacco products.
Sure. Mr. Rock, I've been in Cartersville, in business in Cartersville for a decade now. It'll be 11 years this April, April 15th, actually. When we first opened in Cartersville as a cigar bar, majority of our business sales were cigars. The bar was kind of an auxiliary for our lounge, for people to come in and stay a little while. Over time, in the last 10 years, we thankfully, but regretfully, have outgrown our business model. Meaning, over the last 10 years, cigar sales have, although they've climbed, cigar pricing has actually come down. A lot of manufacturers have actually introduced cigars that are less expensive because of state and local taxes that now exist. That didn't exist 10 years ago. Just so that you know, a state excise tax on a cigar is 23%. So a $10 cigar is actually a $12.30 cigar. So manufacturers started putting out cigars and products that were still premium quality, hand-rolled cigars, that were more in the $5 to $8 range. Well, at the same time, craft beer, wine, and spirits also saw an uptick, not only in the amount sold, but also in how they, how, what the quality of their product is. So it's, in my particular business, we only focus on high-quality products. We try to carry great cigars, but also our spirits. Our average cocktail price may be $8, $9, or $10. We have scotches that are $20, $25, and $30. We have beers that are $7, $8, $9. And so, we've kind of outpaced the original 70% cigar sales versus 30% alcohol sales. And for 10 years straight, we had no issues meeting that ratio. But when we moved in October from East Main Street downtown, our business essentially doubled. I wasn't anticipating that much of an increase in business, but I'm thankful for it. And we've increased our bourbon, our scotch, our cocktail menu. We've increased our seating capacity. So having said all those things, we're selling more alcohol than we were. At the third quarter report, I reported honest numbers that came directly from my CPA. We were at 69% hand-rolled cigars only. Again, that's not counting humidors, lighters, cutters, pipes, tobacco, et cetera. But we were 69%. So I got a warning from Alcohol Control Board for not meeting that 70% ratio. And then I also had discussion with them and started in a couple meetings to see if I could have the ratio changed, because I don't see my business model changing now that we're in a new location and business is better. I presented a proposal to match the restaurant requirements, and they came back at 51% cigars, tobacco, pipes, lighters, cutters, et cetera, versus 49% alcohol. So it keeps majority of my business still a cigar shop, which is what I want to be, but also allows for me to grow, excuse me, grow in selling high-quality distilled spirits, beer, and wine as well. And so that's kind of why I'm here today, is that in order for my business to be legal under the law as it currently stands, and to be productive in the city of Cartersville, I need that change to happen. Because I, you know, fortunately, but unfortunately, we've been successful. And I'm thankful for all of that. And I'm thankful for the discussion that we're having. So I do need this change to happen, so that my business can continue to grow and be an economic development tool for downtown Cartersville.
Good. If I may, if the, if the other products, because I know part of it is the change of definition, is what's included in your, for lack of a better name, your non-alcohol sales.
Correct.
The cigar and all the auxiliary products and accessories makes up about what percentage of your business now?
At this.
If you were to include those other items.
Yes, at this location, between 25 and 30%. And so I don't see that my, I'm sorry, 15 to 20%, I don't, and then 30% alcohol, and then the rest is 50% or more, is, it will be cigars at this location. I don't see that me being able to sell more accessories to offset that. I'm just wanting a little wiggle room. And be lawful. And so, yeah, so we're essentially 50 to 55% cigars, 15 to 20% accessories. And that includes, you know, pipes, tobaccos, humidors, et cetera, and the remainder will be alcohol. And I don't want to go back, I don't want to sell cheap alcohol and expensive cigars. I don't want to sell pitchers of beer and expensive cigars. I want to sell good quality products, where someone can have two drinks and one cigar after work and go home, you know? So that's kind of our business model. We're a premium establishment.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So which one is your passion?
Cigars. I mean, I've been doing it 20 years, 16 years, sign of my own checks. I've traveled all over the world visiting cigar factories. I've had cigars rolled for our company. That is my passion. And that's what we're not going to get away from. So I'm happy with being majority cigar sales, is what I've always wanted to be. But the alcohol, alcohol sales do help pay the bills, and it does keep customers in the building longer. Makes an experience out of it versus just a retail purchase.
I have visited both, I've visited two of your shops, the one in Rome and the one here. So you're dealing in two consumables, right? Alcohol and cigars?
Correct.
And so explain to me a little bit why you allow cigars to come in off the street? Is that a pretty regular practice? Is that?
No, it's not. It's not a regular practice, but there are some consumers that maybe have a favorite cigar that we don't care, even though we care for several, or a couple hundred different cigars. But they might want to bring in a cigar that was given to them, or it's one of their favorites, or they might have bought it online at a much cheaper price, therefore bypassing all of the various taxes. And they want to come in and sit in our nice lounge atmosphere and have a drink to go with it. And they might want to come in and taste that $20 bourbon before they go out and buy that bottle of bourbon at the local liquor store. And so, you know, again, our establishment is, is an experience. And we don't, we don't ask for people to bring in outside product, you know, cigars, but they do, and we don't give them a hard time about it. There are lounges across the state and the nation that charge a cutting fee if you come in and bring a cigar and it's not yours. They charge you $2 to consume it there. We don't think that's necessarily correct. And there are some places that don't allow it at all. But we, you know, we don't sell anything that is, that I don't believe in myself. We don't sell cigarettes. We don't sell any vaping products. We don't sell any kind of drug paraphernalia, whatever you like to call it. We're not going to get on the CBD oil trend or any of that kind of stuff. We are premium hand-rolled cigars, a nice lounge atmosphere, and an ultra-craft bar. That's what we do. And that's what we're good at. And that's what I hire out for, is the best customers to get the experience, the best employees to give the customers the best experience.
I think one of the, probably some of the pushback is when you go to the 49% alcohol, the investment that restaurants have made to, to do that and to, to serve alcohol and food, I don't, you don't, you do not take on that investment of a kitchen and all those different things that a restaurant will have. And so that kind of maybe moves the playing field a little bit for you, I think, in a way.
I agree. And I do consider myself an individual that, I'm an advocate for my business. I had this rules in the city of Rome changed to allow me to sell distilled spirits. I could sell beer and wine without a particular ordinance to allow me to, anybody could sell beer and wine pretty much in the city of Rome without being a restaurant. I have the first license that allows me to sell distilled spirits in the city of Rome without selling food, not being a restaurant. We did that last March, March of 2018. So a year and a month's passed since that went into effect, and I'm the only license holder to this date. It didn't open up a floodgate for other people trying to seek that license denomination. It just happened to be that I knew something, I needed something else for my customers to keep them in my business longer. So they wouldn't, you know, go to my competitors or whatever. I can still offer those scotches, bourbons, and cocktails. So I'm accustomed to doing the work, accustomed to believing in what I do. And I'm accustomed to giving the best experience possible for my customers. That's what drives me. And so I know that I'm not a restaurant. I would be a fool to go in the restaurant business, because this is one of the most difficult businesses in all the world. But I know that my business model is unique, but I feel like I have the credentials and the experience to do this, and to do this in a great manner and set the example. And that's what I'm asking for, is let me set the example for how this is operated. Because I know there's other discussions about other specialty shops holding alcohol licenses. And I kind of want to set the mark for what you need to do in order to have that privilege. And I understand that it is a privilege.
I think, and again, from a policy perspective with council, there, again, that the issue, not just with your shop, but with all the shops. And we're trying to create something that's uniform for everybody, is, is what is that percentage and what does that look like? And so I think that's kind of where the policy issue with us is. At least that's kind of what the consensus that I've kind of gathered from some of our conversations. And again, I understand your point, that you're wanting to be in compliance, and you're trying to leave some wiggle room for your business. Since we're expanding the definition of what is counted towards that total, is 60% something that gives you wiggle room?
It does. It gives me 10% more than I have now. Again, I was.
Is that, is that a model that's going to keep you from going before the Alcohol Control, between the board next year? I don't want to, I don't want to change something and still have it not leave you the room. But at the same time, I think it's important among some of council to make sure that that percentage.
Right.
We've, we've got some tinkering to do on our end. I want to make sure that we are fair to you and your model, while also trying to find a number that perhaps a unanimous council would be more comfortable with. So I'm kind of brokering a percentage right now, for lack of a better term.
And I totally understand that. I, I don't want to have to come in front of the council again in a year, or two years, or five years. And I don't know exactly what the market's going to do. But I do know that, you know, crafted, handcrafted cocktails, bourbons, and scotches, the trends are showing they're not slowing down. And so it's not that I'm selling a bigger quantity of alcohol. I'm selling more quality alcohol, which is, again, more revenue for me and for the city by the drink. You know, 60% would probably do it, but I've only been in this storefront for now five or six months. So I just don't know. You know, I haven't forecasted out enough to know that that's going to keep me, you know, in compliance. So that's why I've asked just to still be a majority, you know, cigar shop with those other products, and then minority alcohol.
Sure.
Now, you know, that just gives me peace of mind. I'd much rather have that 51% alcohol, you know, non-alcoholic things, but still be at 35% and be happy with alcohol sales, you know? It just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I had enough room. So I didn't have to continue to waste people's time by asking for more privileges. I just wanted to do it one time. But I came off this model with the Rome model. I asked for 50%. That's what the restaurants did. That's what Rome decided that they would do for me. I do have a year in experience there now doing that. We've had no issues, no problems. You know, my 3% monthly revenue checks for liquor taxes gone back to city of Rome. They're very appreciative of that. Also, my alcohol license fees have gone way up, so I am contributing. I'm a contributing member to the Business Society. And, you know, since we started selling distilled spirits, you know, my monthly checks have doubled or tripled. And so I think the city should be happy with that, too. And so again, I want to be successful, because if I am, then also everyone else in town's going to be benefiting from that.
Where are your numbers in Rome right now? You said that, you said that it's 50% there. Are you at that mark?
No, we're not even close. And, and so distilled spirits run about 25 to 30, no, no. Alcohol runs about 25 to 30% of my entire business in Rome. Before, I had no percentages. When I had to start counting percentages against my, my complete sales, we're between 25 and 30% on a given month. Obviously, December's higher than, say, January or February. But Rome does not also, Rome allowed me a little extra wiggle room by not counting beer and wine sales. They're more concerned with just distilled spirit sales. And I know your model's a little different. And that's, again, why I'm kind of asking for the 51, 51, 49 ratio.
So basically, Cartersville, for whatever reason, is when you move to this new location, your alcohol sales went top of the roof, essentially.
Our, because our traffic has increased twofold. Yes, sir. Absolutely. And again, we have beers that are, you know, $7, $8, $9 apiece. They're just as much as a, as a cocktail, you know?
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. McDowell, for being here.
Yes, thank you. And I do, I asked for your.
Appreciate it.
You know, your support of this, and I could obviously use it. And so I'm, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Councils, I mentioned in the work session, you have what's recommended in front of you. If you feel, you know, it's in y'all's hands now. It is an ordinance revision. If you feel that you want to change the percentage, you can put that in the form of a motion, see what happens. If you want to.
It looks like you have a.
That was not made this time. It was me. It was me. I admit it. It was me.
Obviously, it can be, it's in council's hands. So y'all can have further discussion. You can craft a motion. We can go from there.
At some point, we do have to come to a cohesive agreement about the percentages. And I think that Alcohol Control Board joint meeting, work session is going to be pivotal in that decision. But just to clarify, what he's asking for, Keith, is to have the same percentages as a restaurant currently.
Food, alcohol sales.
Right. Is that, that's what, where the restaurants are now?
No.
Where are they now?
I believe it's 55, 45 is where the restaurants are now. 55 food, 45 alcohol.
It's similar, 45 food.
Oh, 45 food, 55 alcohol. Sorry about that. I will just state that the Alcohol Control Board, when they were considering this, was also taking up the broader issue. And they ultimately decided that the cigar bar was sort of different than basically all the rest of the locations they were looking at. So that's why they went ahead and came up with a percentage for the cigar bar and forwarded that to y'all. They just felt their business model and what they were looking for is a lot different than the dress shops and the other places down there that were asking for it. So that's why you have that one separately.
I'm going to make a motion to approve 40, 49, 51, as he requests.
Okay. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. By show of hands, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to one. Next item is business license ordinance revision. Mr. Menino.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you noted, we're looking to make changes to the business license ordinance. After discussion with the city attorney's office, it was noted that we do not have procedures to suspend or revoke a license. And city attorney's office created some. We reviewed it and do recommend approval of this ordinance. It is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Randy on this item? And seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. We have some second readings, and Mr. Menino, your show continues.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is a zoning case. It's actually a de-annexation of approximately 265 acres of Bartow County-owned property. I'm not going to go back through the presentation. Peter Olson was here at the first reading and presented the reasoning why the county is wishing to de-annex this out of the city jurisdiction. With that, it was heard by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application to you. I had noted Mr. Olson wasn't going to be able to be here. Representative from the county is here, Mr. Brandon Johnson. If there are additional questions, it is a second reading, and Planning Commission does recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? I'll open up a public hearing for AZ 19-01, and anybody wishing to step forward and speak either for or against may do so at this time.
I have a question.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Who do you need to ask? Brandon? All right. Fun for Mr. Johnson. And please, your name and address for our clerk.
Brandon Johnson, 135 West Cherokee Avenue, Suite 124.
I was, I had a freedom of the last city council meeting, so I was approved to what was discussed. Could you give me an overview of basically the basis of why you are requesting to have this de-annexed?
Yes, sir. This property was annexed into the city roughly 15 years ago to prevent the proposed landfill in Emerson. Since that, the county's left the property in the city limits, had no plans to do anything with the property. There is a developer looking at the former Avitron property in Emerson. This property could potentially be a part of that. So the county is wishing to de-annex. It would potentially be annexed into the city of Emerson at a later date.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion or questions? And if there's none, the Chair, well, Chair will entertain a motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Randy, if you'll get us started on ZMA 19-01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed amendment to the city zoning map. We try to do this annually. What it does, it includes previous cases where they're included on the actual official adopted zoning map. So we have a running tally of that and to keep the map present. There was one change we had discussed at the previous meeting. If you chose to de-annex the property from the previous case, we were going to remove this from that map. So with that, this includes all the zonings up to that point. And we would like to additionally recommend approval with the amendment of removing the piece that was just de-annexed.
In other words, approve the adjusted map?
Yes. Close enough.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, Randy. I'll open up a public hearing for ZMA 19-01. And anybody else wishing to speak either for or against may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for final consideration.
To make a motion to approve.
Did that be approved, the adjusted map?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I second the approval of the adjusted map.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Michael Hill, you have the next item. I've been in this position for over 10 years. This is the coolest title ever. Tell us about the Flame Pack 400.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council, Mayor. We, the federal code requires us to have. Yes, sir. Good evening, Council, Mayor. We, the federal code requires us to have a leak detector.
Give you a glass of water.
Yeah, almost. One of those scotches that guy was talking about, I think. They require us to do leak detection and finding leaks and such. Of course, this is not a funny thing when you get right down to this. So it requires the use of a Flame Pack 400. This is a very delicate instrument that can pick up very, very minute particles of natural gas. Southern Cross and Duluth manufactures this. They also do the repair on these. The one that we are using now is over 20 years old, and they are a sole-source provider. It is $7,011, and it is a budgeted item. We're asking you to approve this, please.
Any questions for Mr. Hill on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in, any second? Sam, who'd you have for the first and the second on that?
Gary in town.
Very good. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Jones, next item, please.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a Flame Pack 400 for you, but maybe this will keep some flames from breaking out in a few places. First up, we'd like to get your approval to do some preventive maintenance on our switchgear at both the water and wastewater plants. This is something we've been doing regularly for the past several years. Believe it or not, you need to dust and clean the inside of switchgear, because at the higher voltages that we run at, a spider web can get condensation on it and cause it to arc or cause, or create a path to ground, which causes extremely bad things to happen. This company will come in, open all the switchgear, clean, lubricate, align, make sure all the breakers open and close as they should, check functionality of some of the critical systems in there. We took bids, and the low bid came back from Electrical Testing Incorporated, ETI, at $7,800, and the cost will be split roughly 55-45 between the water and wastewater plant, with the water plant getting the larger portion. Would ask for your approval, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Jones on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. Equally unexciting. We'd like to extend our security fence at the wastewater plant. We've talked about several times that we have a three-sided fence, which encourages some unauthorized tours at the plant. That being a big enough problem in and of itself, we do, are, well, we are beginning to have an active construction project there, where we will have numerous 20-foot-deep holes, a lot of other obstacles and hazards in the way. We're just trying to plug a hole, essentially, with this fence. It won't completely surround the plant, but we do think it will close one of the most popular paths inside. We took bids from ABC Fence, Carlsville Fence, and Bartow Fence, and ABC came back with the lowest bid of $6,800. That is also a budgeted item and would recommend for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gillum, you've got the final two. No pressure. Welcome aboard.
Good evening. Parks and Rec Department comes to you for a bid request that was sent out for the purchase of an infill groomer and bunker rake that was advertised through the website for more than 25 days, 28 days. One bid was received, meeting all the specifications from Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation for the purchase of a Toro 3040 Sand Pro in the amount of $18,422.94. This is a budget item that we are recommending to Mayor and Council for approval.
Questions for Tom on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please.
Thank you. Also, we sent out a bid request for the purchase of a 60-inch zero-turn mower that was advertised through the website for more than 28 days. 11 bids were received, with the low bid meeting all the specifications coming in from Franklin Tractor for a Grasshopper 328 GS EFI 61-inch zero-turn mower in the amount of $7,792.75. This is a budget item that we're recommending to Mayor and Council for approval.
Thank you. Questions on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs come for council this evening? Seeing none. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.